August 9th, 2021. We're going to start with Mayor Scheffler memo of the period between council meetings, but that will, this one specifically talks to temporary resolution 10221. A lot of information in there, most of, much of which is known. But really kind of reminding that when we passed the city budget back in December, we knew we'd come back and have to make changes because the election needed to be certified. We didn't have all the raises for the bargaining units in there and other assorted items that needed to be corrected in the budget. So this is, this is the kind of the budget correction piece. And with that, you received an email from the mayor with lots of information, I believe, on Friday. So he, I'm going to ask Mayor Scheffler just kind of give us the summary so we can answer the questions now and proceed with ultimately doing two readings on this piece. So you actually have a couple of weeks to take a look at it if you have other questions. Okay? Mayor Scheffler?
Well, to start out, being very much aware that the Finance Committee Chair likes everything to be put into one big bundle instead of five or six different
He does.
...resolutions to past budget items. We got it all rolled into one, not without a lot of pushing and shoving and cajoling some of the departments to get their numbers in, but we got it. I'm going to go through and kind of hit the highlights, the big numbers, and after our questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Just going down the spreadsheet that I sent out, first one under Personnel, there are two big line items. One is a $50,000 increase to legal services. We actually have a workers' comp case that is going to trial in October, and we will be liable for some legal fees for that. And this is Law Director Ollm's estimation of what those legal fees might amount to. Next, a $30,000 increase in legal fees for collective bargaining. You're probably all aware that we have reached agreements with four of the five unions with at least one of the four. We had some extra hearings with the ASME union. We have had many meetings, including a seven and a half hour federal mediation and lots of other things. So that continues on, and hopefully those legal fees will cover what we have left to get a contract with them. So there are a number of line items regarding electronic door access. So the pass card entry into the Police Department has stopped operating, which makes it a little unhandy to get in and out easily. And the Police Department got a federal grant to pay for that upgrade, but since we're doing that, we are proposing here to take advantage to upgrade the other city buildings, City Hall, the NX, and the SRT building with new systems, which would allow electronic access to some doors that are now keyed, which will make everything more convenient, even for the city council people when they come in at 7:30 in the morning for committee meetings and find the doors are locked. There are a number of line item changes to police and fire budget for personnel items. And again, we did not budget for anything to reflect the collective bargaining agreements that are now settled. So a number of those line items are in there. There's one particular in health insurance, or under police, it says health insurance $139,964, but the explanation is replacing roof and replacing or repairing compressors. You may recall a few meetings ago, we needed to order the material for the roof of replacement of City Hall because the cost were going up and the lead time was way out there. So we needed to get that done ASAP. In order to do that, we transferred money out of health insurance over to repairs or miscellaneous assets, whatever it was, in order to issue a purchase order to get those materials. So this $139,000 is just replacing the money that was transferred out of health insurance back, I don't know when it was, a couple of months ago, maybe, or at least several All the perks changes reflect lots, basically increases in volume of things. For instance, we ended up with 88 soccer teams this year instead of 70. So we had additional costs for umpire referees, I guess they are in soccer, and uniforms and that kind of stuff. Under entertainment, there's $3,000 because the cost of the sound system for Friday night bandstand increased significantly over last year. And their pool chemicals went way up, so there's money in here for pool chemicals and utilities under parks. And by the way, the Parks request was approved by the Parks Board at their last meeting. Also under parks, it's the $318,000 from the ARPA money for lost revenue. And you actually approved the other side of that, accepting that revenue a couple of meetings ago, and this is just appropriating it on the expense side. Income tax, $75,000. You may recall that we have a city ordinance that allows, for economic development purposes, certain businesses in certain areas of town to get a rebate of some of their city income taxes withheld for new businesses. And basically, this accounts for payments to Blue Label and Magna for their city income tax refunds that were returned for economic development purposes. We have the replacement, we have an additional person in human resources, a second person to assist Gretchen Nyhizer and all the duties that she's been buried under for the last probably year and a half, but much needed additional person to help maintain her sanity. And Auditor Nettles has an additional person to cover the increased workload there. Under Law Director, we have temporary additional person, since Law Director Ollm is going to be assuming the municipal court judgeship on January 1st and is going to be departing, this is a position to get an attorney in place for training purposes between now and City Hall under contract services, there's a couple of items in there. You have approved to hire a contract manager at risk for a City Hall renovation. We did not have any money budgeted for that. So there's money in that $70,000 for that. Also, the elevator has been particularly cantankerous this year. We've had lots of repairs and there's been a number of periods when it was out of order for days at a time. Hopefully, we'll get that resolved with renovation to the building. And the door access controls are in there. Under Civil Service, we've got an additional $25,000 for civil service testing of police and fire candidates. You all know, the only way you get to be a policeman or fireman is to start out with a civil service test, and we take the top scores and work our way down through that. And as a result of how low we are personnel-wise, and we've given a number of tests and anticipate giving more tests this year to increase the pool of candidates so we can hire some very qualified people. Questions? I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here, and I've covered a good bit of it. There are a lot of more minor line items. If anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer. Mrs. Teener?
I'm just asking about the hiring. Are you going to put, is it going to go out there on the website for people? Do you guys already have somebody in mind?
They'll, they'll, they'll all be posted. Right. We have, yeah, we know we have nobody in mind to hire.
Okay.
I want to defer to the auditor real quick because she wants to reinstate a position that was eliminated years ago because of financial issues. So Auditor Nettles, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Councilman Stotin. Yes, I had an additional person, a staff member, that was in 2014 during the things because I hadn't replaced it in a while. The money in the city was kind of putting in for the general health of the general fund. I didn't replace it, but our workload has each year grown substantially in whether it be the local grants that we get or the federal grants, the state grants we get, and all the reporting requirements that come with that, with everything, any project, construction project that the city goes into and gets assistance from ODOT, OWDA, or what have you. There are certain red tape, so to speak. If you get federal state monies, there are all these hoops that you have to jump in on the backend, which we have to report and we have to do. So it's creating a lot of work on our end that we're kind of at a breaking point in our department, that we're needing that extra staff back.
Very good. Mayor, I have one question, and I would open it to everybody else. How many employees do we have?
Pretty close to 500, I think, including the transit employees, which there, I think we hired somewhere around 40 bus drivers, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I just wanted to put that stake in the ground as we talk about, you know, HR resources and things of that nature. So with that, I'd like to open the Florida Council. There's a lot here to, you know, digest. We are not going to pass this tonight. We have two weeks. We'll pass it on second reading. And maybe you don't have questions tonight, but if you do between now and then, certainly have an opportunity to talk to both the auditor and the mayor and the Service Safety Director, and certainly I'll help answer any questions. But if you have any questions right now, you know, top of mind, yes, Mr. James?
Just wanted this to direct it toward Auditor Nettles. It's my understanding that if you don't keep track of some of these things that have all the hoops and loops and fiery rings that you've got to jump through, we are at the risk of losing and having to pay some of that back.
That is correct.
So that gives a little more intensity to having enough personnel on your staff to make sure we don't mess that up.
Yes, so if we fail to do something or fail to do the proper expenditures on the grants, we can lose the grant and have to pay 100% of the tax.
Thank you.
Further questions? So seeing note for the questions, you know, for the mayor. With this, we will have first reading on Resolution 120-21 tonight, but in the interim, if you have questions, you have all sorts of resources to reach out to give full answers. We'll have a discussion prior to passage. So with that, Mayor, auditor, thank you so much for giving us some insight on that. Very much appreciated. Clerk Sandy, I am including this as part of a record, but I'll be sending it. Okay, so moving on. First item on, or the next item on tonight's agenda, rather, is Resolution 9321. That's a resolution to appropriate the JAG grant funds in the amount of $34,739. This is coming through safety. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you. I think Chief is, Chief Plars back there, and he will come up and speak on this grant.
These are essentially grant funds that we got permission to put in for in '17, '19, and '20, and the money's finally getting released to us this year.
Don't we share this with county?
We do, sir. They get between 30 and 40% of it. It's a requirement of the grant. There have been one or two times where they said they didn't want any of this. We actually got it all for our use, but generally, they do take some of it.
Okay. And then, just for some clarity and I'm getting the head on 94, are you taking the money out of 93 and then the CARES money in 94 and kind of bundling it all together for purchases? Or are these standalone items? I was a little confused.
They're standalone, generally all like '17, '19, and '20. We almost always use to keep our body cam system running because that's technology that just rotates like a cellphone. Every three to five years, we have a lot of turnover in those items. The second one there, that you were talking about, the amount that we put in, the 38-422, that was specific. So you had to actually put that in, and then the bureaucrats in DC decided if they liked what you wanted to spend the money on, and then they give you permission to spend the money. And we put in for that last year. And part of that, we did have some personnel costs because at the time, we were really, really concerned we might have layoffs and overtime issues related to COVID. So, you know, we might have some wiggle room to where we might be able to move some of that money within that program, but there, as she stated, there's so many hoops, and it's so onerous that I hate to change it. I'd rather just give money back than try to change it because that's where some of these delays from 2017 have gotten through turnover. And it's been a really hard process for the guy who does the grants. There've been some turnover. The federal government did not go back to work. They're kind of working from home, and they're not working at the pace that they used to pay. So there's been a lot of delays in receiving this money.
Okay. Questions for the chief on this? Mrs. Bobbitt?
I was going to ask for suspension on both of these this evening.
Doesn't mean you get it.
Thank you, chief. Doesn't mean I'll get it, but I'm going to ask for suspension.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of hijacked 94.
You did, but that's okay.
Okay. I'll let you maybe explain a little bit of that. So on 9321, we are going to suspend, and then we'll move on to 9421, which is really the resolution to appropriate from the CARES Act for use for approved expenses by the Police Department. Again, this is coming through your committee, Mrs. Bobbitt.
Right, and we have everything spied out there on the resolution. So I will ask for suspension.
All right. Any questions?
Grant monies.
On either one of those? Very good. We will suspend on 93 and 94. Thank you, Mrs. Bobbitt. Next item I have is Resolution 9521. That's a resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the issuance of a then-and-now certificate for a repair for the water department. This is coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. James?
Thank you, Chairman Stotin. I'm going to ask Mike Nixon to come up. This has to do with actually replacing the filter media on one of the filter beds at the Memorial Drive facility, and I'll let Mike go ahead and expand on that.
Thank you. Councilman James, this may seem like a little bit of a rerun. Earlier this year, I stood before you requesting the same authorization and some funding to do filters two and five, and those went well. We got them both done. And then the last couple of weeks, filter one has failed in the same way that two and five had done earlier. We were able to get ahold of Pelton, get a price. We'll be, we didn't request an appropriation because we'll be using appropriated monies in the North Water Treatment Plant RNI account. That's going to be $119,790 to do this. If we can get this passed tonight, Pelton has their contractor lined up to be in next Monday to start the digging out of that old material. That's the longest part because that gravel, sand and gravel, once we add the chlorine to the raw water, it oxidizes the minerals. That turns those filter beds into concrete, basically. So they'll have three or four guys down with electric jackhammers for probably two weeks, jackhammering and removing the meat out of those filters and then dumping it in the truck for disposal. And then it's fairly quick, putting in the five layers of gravel and the layer of torpedo sand afterwards. That goes much quicker and easier. So we would like to get this going since we're in peak water demand season, try to get them in here and out of here in a couple of weeks and make sure we have that plant up and running. As you know, we're in the process of designing a new Miller Park plant, but we've got to limp this one along for the next couple of years. And we're certainly not doing any more than we have to, but we feel we need to have our filters all operating. So I appreciate if we could have suspension tonight.
And that's exactly why we will ask for suspension tonight.
I have a question. So you take the sand and gravel and you make it into like concrete and then chip it away?
No, it becomes like concrete down in the filter.
Oh, over time.
Yeah, just hard. And then it'd be nice, they put it in, they basically blow it in with a back truck. It'd be nice if we could suck it out with a back truck, but once you get down to a certain point in the sand, then it becomes like concrete.
I got you.
So they're literally down there busting it out with the jackhammers. And it's quite an ordeal, very noisy, very dirty, and hard labor for the guys lifting that stuff because there's no conveyor belt to get it down the filter, up to the area that they can get it into a hopper and then out the back door and dump it. So a lot of physical, a lot of tough physical.
Wow. That's not going to be the new technology we're using?
No.
Okay.
I can assure you.
No.
Okay. So further questions for Mr. Nixon? Seeing none, we will ask for suspension on 9521. Thank you. Next item I have is Resolution 9621. That's a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a project agreement with ODOT for the reservicing of Sixth Avenue from Memorial Drive to Maple. It's like Mr. Shunk is here to enlighten us.
This phase of Sixth Avenue is what I call the second phase. It's from Memorial Drive to Maple Avenue. If you remember, we broke Sixth Avenue down into three phases. This one, this agreement is with the Ohio Department of Transportation and City of Lancaster to basically get the project into the program for STP federal funding, and that's a 95-5 split. We will be back later, so right now, we're doing the plans and getting those approved through ODOT. This project will probably bid in January, be constructed next construction season, 2022. We will be back before we bid the project to get another piece of legislation to get authorization to do that.
No one's going to argue with you that that's not needed. Any questions? All right, three readings on this, though, right?
It can go through, yeah.
Okay. Is there any benefit to passing sooner?
Just make ODOT happier quicker.
Make them happier quicker. That's not, all right. We will, for three, and let's talk with Cory and see if he wants to push it up a little bit to maybe two.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So right now, three readings on 9621. Next item I have is 9721. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for the lateral D trunk sewer phase one project, not to exceed $3.2 million, coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. James?
Yes, and I'll invite Mr. Denise Cruz to give us a little more expansion on this. This is an extreme, it's a large amount of money, and Auditor Nettles and I have looked at some of the cash balances and things. I get a little concerned about when I see amounts in the 3.2 million range, that it does give me pause, but please continue.
And we weren't happy about it either. This project was originally budgeted at 1.5 million.
Yes.
And materials costs have just gone up so high, and delivery times have gone so long that we can't even get pipe for this project until the end of December, and we pre-ordered the pipe for the contractor. So we opened bids for this project two weeks ago, and Rock River Construction from here in Lancaster is low bidder. Their bid came in just under 3 million. The other 200,000 will reserve for contingencies on the project, so we shouldn't spend 3.2. And we're asking for one reading so we can get them under contract and get costs set and materials ordered.
All right, Mr. James?
We will indeed ask for suspension on this tonight for the reasons that she eloquently stated.
All right, so we will suspend on 9721, as usual. Next item I have is 9821. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with the Wiley Road Water Loop Project, not to exceed $1.2 million. Mr. James, again, coming through Water, Water Pollution.
Yes. Actually, I've got Stephen Wellsted here to give us a little more expansion on this. And once again, Auditor Nettles and I've had this discussion about the 1.2 million dollars, but Stephen, please continue.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Yeah, so this Wiley Road Water Loop Project, I've been here before on this one. Of course, this is the project. We're going to include a bore under State Route 33 to connect the water lines on Ruble Park Avenue and Magna Avenue. And I had come here previously to ask for advertising for bids authorization. We got that. We have been advertising bids. We have a bid opening this Friday, assuming that isn't pushed back for any reason. So we will have bids here at the end of this week, and this is just the standard, asking authorization to sign a contract once we do get those bids in. And yeah, as Denise said and was stated, costs for everything are going up, up, up. So the 1.2 is a big number. We talked about internally and with our engineer, and we hope, we think this should be a good enough number that we won't have to come back for something higher. But again, we just, with the current climate, we just don't know. So, but I am asking for two readings, and that will give us the ability to, if we do get a good price in this Friday, we could potentially bring that number down if there are concerns about that. So I will note that, but that's all I have.
Questions for Mr. Wellsted? Mr. James?
Just as one point of clarification, we do not need to dig up the bypass in order to put this in. This is going to be a boring underneath the road.
Yes, correct.
So we won't disrupt any of that traffic. We will go two readings on this as well, and Mrs. Teener will be the second.
Very good. We will go two readings on 9821. Thank you, sir. Next item I have is Resolution 9921. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding to purchase pipe and fittings for use on the Wiley Road Water Loop Project and to approve any associated then-and-now certificates. Purchases are not to exceed $133,000, again, coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. James?
I will also yield some time now to Stephen to explain this a little bit more.
Yeah, again, same project and same issue Denise is dealing with on her project here, the ductile iron pipe and other materials we need for this project have a very long lead time. Prices keep going up and up, so we've done the same thing on this one. We've talked to a supplier. We got quotes from four suppliers, actually, and we put it in order with the cheapest of those suppliers for all the materials we do need. Again, in this case, we're looking at over four months to get that pipe in as the longest lead time. We put that order in, I believe, last week, two weeks ago, late July, and we're looking at like a mid-December pipe delivery. So again, we put that in with the understanding that we will have a PO secured to give to them so we can continue with that order. So that is why I'm asking for one reading here, suspend tonight, and one reading so that we can create a PO, give that to them to secure our order. If we don't get that, then we potentially If we don't get that, then we potentially risk pushing that back another month.
The question I have is, this is atypical for the supply chain, is that right? Or is it stuff typically available?
Yeah, how long typically, Mike, does it take to?
This is very not typical. Uh, we generally place our pipe bid in the spring and within three to four weeks have the material delivered to us. Uh, what we're seeing right now is a lot of the plastic pipes are now exceeding the price of the ductile iron pipe. So people are switching back to ductile iron pipe. So they, they can't get because of the polymer shortage and manufacturing problem, they can't get their plastic pipe, so they're switching back to ductile, so that's backing up the ductile iron people. Uh, the cost of steel has gone up some. With the same material we bought nineteen, twenty nineteen versus today, there's a minimum sixty percent, uh, price increase on the different pipe import businesses. So I don't know how the economy can continue to support this kind of inflation and long lead times. So I guess we'll wait and see that, uh, things are becoming twice as expensive as they were a year and a half, two years ago.
Isn't that the old invisible hand Adam Smith talked about, right? The elasticity of supply and demand?
That's correct.
Anyway, thanks for that clarity on that. I know there's a lot of.
And thank goodness we have a good vendor who ordered the pipe, uh, on their purchase order, knowing that we have an important project coming up to get the order into the foundry. So we are on the list of being, uh, manufactured. They said if they had a big order in tomorrow, that could back this up two or three months. So they went ahead and placed our order, knowing we're a long time customer and we would get them a purchase order. So it's on their purchase order right now, it's not ours. It's not our order until we give them a PO. I see the order are getting.
Yeah, that's why there's a then and now in here. It's kind of knowing we're getting the cart before the horse, so they're getting that in there, so they don't have to come back to council for it later.
You know, fifty years ago, this is the way business was done, you know, on trust, right?
Right. We still have a good company that has trust.
Yeah, well, that, that's a good thing. True. Well, thanks, thanks for that clarity because, I mean, it's, it's all through the supply chain, doesn't matter what, uh, what ladder, or what, uh, what, uh, industry.
We've got to get trucks here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's another issue.
Get drivers for the trust.
All right, so Mr. James, bring this home on ninety-nine twenty-one then?
Uh, we will ask for suspension tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks, Stephen.
Next item I have is Resolution one hundred twenty-one. That is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the material terms of the One Ohio National Opioid Settlement Agreement. I'm going to defer to, uh, Law Director, uh, Stephanie Hall, uh, or Assistant Law Director, Stephanie Hall, to kind of give us the, uh, highlights of this and why we need to pass it tonight.
Yes, sir. So on February of twenty twenty, City Council approved and passed permanent Resolution thirty-seven twenty to accept the One Ohio MOU and furtherance of the opioid litigation settlement. Uh, this week, we received a proposal, uh, for all of the opioid litigation in Ohio, and we need to respond, um, with our willingness by August thirteenth. So it's got to be done by Friday, August thirteenth, in order for us to participate in the settlement. Based on the current proposal, the opioid distributors are going to pay a maximum of twenty-one billion dollars over eighteen years, and Johnson &amp; Johnson will pay a maximum of five billion over nine years, with approximately twenty-two point eight billion in settlement proceeds payable to state and local subdivisions nationwide. Current settlement projections of money payable Lancaster range from two hundred and twenty thousand to three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If the settlement goes through, then we could see the money as early as April of twenty-twenty-two. The money's restricted to funding, funding future abatement efforts. Um, but we have to authorize, sign and return the participation form by Friday, eight thirteen, so we're asking for suspension to go ahead and get that done.
Questions for Stephanie? Mr. Hall?
Yes, um, the amount that you articulated for Lancaster, is that to be distributed in a lump or is that going to be over time?
I honestly don't know. I haven't seen anything that says one way or the other. Um, I would imagine if they're paying it all in, it will come at once, but I can't, I can't answer that.
Spread over time, that's, uh, that's a pretty thin amount, uh, that would be, that would probably have minimal or de minimis impact on our community, I would suspect.
Yeah.
And do you have a sense of what the general response is going to be around the state in terms of signing the document?
Yes, based on our, our council's thought on this, it's going to be accepted. The Purdue Pharma bankruptcy situation is separate from this, but it's, it's nothing for anybody. So this One Ohio settlement's kind of, you know, we've got to put our hands in this basket.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. James?
Just real quick, again, that money can be used, you said for abatement?
Yes.
And, um, and I'm assuming that's for cleaning up meth labs and things like that? Is that what this is for?
So it's for opioid abatement efforts.
Okay.
So.
And that's both people and?
Potentially drug house situations, that kind of thing, yes. If there's a, a rational nexus between what you're doing with the money and opioid abatement, I would imagine that would be covered.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Mayor Schefler?
I might be able to shed a little more light on this. My understanding is that ninety percent of the political subdivisions involved have to approve this or it goes down. Uh, but it's anticipated since it's, it's all we have right now, uh, that it will be approved by at least ninety percent. This money, this pot of money, into a number of, of different segments, uh, including some that goes to a trust that will then be divvied out based on applications, and we may be eligible for some more of that, or some of the, uh, social service agencies, uh, locally might be eligible for more of that once it gets funded and the criteria for applying for those grants is established. Uh, so there, there could be more at some point in the future.
Okay. Further questions? All right, seeing none in the timeliness of this, um, I'm going to ask for suspension. Craig, can you second that, please?
Yes.
So we will suspend on Resolution one hundred twenty-one. Next item I have is Resolution one oh-one twenty-one. That's a resolution to increase and decrease appropriations in the Water Revenue Fund and the Wastewater Revenue Fund. This is coming through water, water pollution. Mr. James?
Thank you, Chairman Stotan. I'll ask, uh, Mr. Mike Nixon to give us a little bit of clarification on this as well. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, uh, not sure why, but I underbudgeted the, uh, uniform accounts in both departments less than, uh, twenty twenty-one, early in twenty twenty. So in anticipating our expenditures throughout the rest of the year, I anticipate needing six thousand in the, uh, Water Department and three thousand in, in wastewater. Budget, we will just decrease a couple line items to increase uniform line items, so it's a net zero, uh, gain in the budget. So if we could get suspension tonight, that would help on the, uh, water side particularly because it is running below.
And we will ask for suspension.
Any questions on one oh-one twenty-one? Seeing none, we will suspend on one oh-one, uh, tonight. Thank you, sir. Next item I have is Resolution one oh-two twenty-one. Uh, this is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-one city budget for the discussion at the beginning of finance tonight, uh, all of which will be, uh, included in the finance notes. These are kind of the correcting entries, uh, that Mayor Schefler discussed, Auditor Nettles discussed, and we collectively discussed, uh, at, at the onset of tonight's meeting. Um, you will have two weeks to take a look at this. We're going to go two readings, so if you have any questions between, uh, then and now, look at that, see I leave that in there? Um, then, uh, please bring it to the attention of the administration or myself or others, and, uh, we will look to pass this correcting budget, uh, in two weeks. So with that, Mrs. Craig, can you second me on this?
Yes.
So two readings on one oh-two twenty-one. Uh, next item I have are departmental updates. Are there any departmental updates this evening?
I just wanted you to know, because I've been getting lots of calls and emails on this. On July thirtieth, the State of Ohio announced they were making two hundred and fifty million dollars, uh, from their American Rescue Plan money available for water and sewer projects. Um, last Monday, I submitted three applications for the city, um, to, um, really cover the cost of these increases that we're seeing. So I submitted an application for the Wiley Road Water Line, for the lateral desanitary sewer, and for CSO ten twenty-nine reconstruction. So if you start getting calls from people saying, hey, there's just money available, it's already spent. We got it.
Very good. So you've actually submitted the application. You don't have the money though, right?
Do not have the money yet, no.
And when would you potentially, uh, learn?
I believe the applications are due the fifteenth and they're going to rank them. There's very little information about this. Even the legislation was pretty sketchy. Um, so applications, I believe, are due the fifteenth. They're going to rank all the projects and then award. So they, they put higher points on projects in the next six months. So we're ready to go on all of those. Um, so I imagine they want to get the money out as soon as possible.
Okay. Keep us posted.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I have some project updates. Uh, we talked about the second phase of Sixth Avenue. The first phase, what I call West Sixth Avenue from Roosevelt to Memorial, uh, was awarded to Kukozing. They are going to start, they're telling me, yet here in August, August thirtieth, I believe. Uh, they're going to come in and do some of the curb work and sidewalk work. Um, hopefully they'll have that finished, you know, mid-September, late September to pave it and have everything wrapped up, uh, before the end of October. That's the completion date for that project, so I'm looking forward to seeing that road being paved.
Very much so, everybody else.
Think we all are.
Hardly knows.
And that, that phase is a, just to remind, that's an OPWC-funded project, um, which allowed us to move everything up. One year originally, that was a STP project. Uh, Safe Routes to School Project out on Sheridan Drive. This is from Frederick to the Medill School. This is another one we've been looking forward to for a long time. It's a federal grant. I don't, I don't remember how many years ago when we first applied for it. Um, so it's finally getting around to construction. Um, that is an ODOT let project, a hundred percent funded with the federal grant. Uh, that project, unfortunately, will start on the sixteenth of August, which is the same week that school starts. Um, so.
Not government planning one oh-one or?
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's, there's only so much we can do with, um, with those schedules. It's up to the contractor, you know, they have, they have until the completion date to finish the project. Um, newcomers are a reputable outfit and they're fairly large, so hopefully they can, uh, finish it quickly and, and get out of there. Uh, they will be maintaining traffic. Sheridan Drive will not be closed. Uh, I think we asked that they have a law enforcement officer out there for, especially for the first couple of days of school. Uh, the third project, I guess, third and fourth project, Edie Road, um, so this will be, um, North Columbus Street. So part of the Edie Road Project, which is our safety project that Shelley Company's working on now. They will be, um, closing one lane of North Columbus Street and using flaggers to maintain two-way traffic, starting later this week and maybe into next week. Uh, maybe Monday or Tuesday, they're hopeful to be finished with that. And then immediately when they're finished, we're, we're trying to keep Truco and, and the Shelley Company, Truco's going to be down the road at Timber Top, working on their turn lane. Um, so we're, we're trying to get those guys to play nice so that they're not both working at the same time. So that's, that's the plan. You know, they'll, they'll close down one side of, one lane on the side of the road and they'll, they'll get prepped for asphalt and then they'll bring the asphalt back up to the surface and they'll shift traffic over to the other side. So, construction in progress.
Progress, right?
Yeah. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Schump? With all that, I mean, it's all good news, but, you know, it's, uh, it is driver angst, no doubt. But, you know, good things are happening in our community because of all of it, which is why these things are happening. All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Any other departmental updates? Seeing none, I'll defer now to, uh, President Wu for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two ordinances to work through this evening. Twenty-three twenty-one is an ordinance to accept ineasement for city sanitary sewer lines coming through water, water pollution. Mr. James?
Uh, yes, I see you've got it noted there as we're going to suspend on that tonight. Is that indeed the case?
I'm sorry?
Is that indeed the case? You want to suspend on that?
That's what's moved.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it was requested for suspension. The clerk is telling me, yes, it was requested for suspension.
All right. We've got some more clarification?
Yeah, conferring with Denise and Stephen. This is part of the Project Ruby, um, infrastructure work, so to get things cleaned up, if we can get this passed tonight, that'd be beneficial.
Repeat that, you want it passed tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to pass it tonight?
I'm unclear.
I'm waiting for more questions. Go ahead.
Well, as Councilman James changes my mind, I would like that passed.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Nixon or Mr. James? Very good. Your second on this one is Mr. Hall.
Mr. Hall, that's great.
For suspension this evening. We also have temporary ordinance twenty-four twenty-one, an ordinance to amend the Timber Top Tiff is coming through economic development. Mr. Schoenover is not here. Um, yeah, I was wondering about that. So, Mr. McDaniel?
Uh, so this is a, a piece to correct errors that were made in original legislation that we passed a couple of meetings ago, essentially a couple of parts of where we're looking to stake. Uh, there are no changes to the terms and conditions, except this is just a correction here that was made in original legislation.
Very good. Questions for Mr. McDaniel? Okay, so we're planning for suspension tonight. Mr. Stotan, you was the second?
Yes.
Very good. That's all I have. I'll turn it back to the chairman.
Any other items of finance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second, we are adjourned at seven forty, or, sorry, six forty-five, Mr. President.
Raise the meeting, the Lake City Council will begin at six fifty-five.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County and the State of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS. and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at seven four zero six five four two eight four eight for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at seven four zero six five three zero six five two. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please join me in order of prayer. Father, we are thankful for this day once again, thankful for the opportunities that are before us and for your many blessings. We ask that you would be with us tonight, continue to lead, guide, and direct us in the work that is set before us. May we well represent those who have put us in these positions for the betterment of this city. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover? Mr. Stotin?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Let the record reflect that eight of nine members of council are in attendance tonight. Mr. Stotin?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Schoonover from tonight's meeting.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Schoonover. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll just note that Councilman Schoonover has a work issue that has precluded him from attending this evening's meeting. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated July nineteenth, 2021.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials?
Series of emails dated July twenty-eighth, 2021, regarding special code enforcement meetings submitted by Mr. Matlin. Email dated July twenty-eighth, 2021, regarding special code enforcement meetings submitted by City Engineer Nolan. Email dated July twenty-eighth, 2021, regarding special code enforcement meetings submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Email dated July twenty-eighth, 2021, regarding special code enforcement meetings submitted by Jeffrey Davis, Superintendent Certified Building Department. Email dated July twenty-eighth, 2021, regarding special code enforcement meeting submitted by Pete Vale, Administrator Certified Building Department. Email dated August third, 2021, regarding Service Committee meeting cancellation submitted by Mrs. Teener. A series of emails dated August ninth, 2021, regarding the auditor restoration of a position eliminated in 2014, submitted by Auditor Tricia Nettles. Email dated August ninth, 2021, regarding auditor restoration of position eliminated in 2024, or 2014, submitted by Mrs. Teener. And finally, an email dated August ninth, 2021, regarding August ninth finance agenda submitted by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there communications?
There are none to be presented.
There are no special awards presentations this evening? Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time at our Lancaster City Council meetings, we set time aside for the voters and taxpayers of the city to address City Council on any item or issue they would like. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address Lancaster City Council? All right, well, thank you all for being here this evening. Reports of standing committees?
I have one. The Finance Committee meeting dated August ninth, 2021, submitted by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file reports of standing committees?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Other report committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the first reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-three dash twenty-one.
A resolution to increase receipts inappropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend the certificate of other sources, and appropriations with the county auditor and the police law enforcement JAG grant fund two zero two seven, authored by Mrs. Bobbitt, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, Police Chief is here. Please, can you come up and please talk to us about this JAG grant?
While he's making his way, can we have your motion to suspend?
Well, yes, we can. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend Temporary Resolution number ninety-three twenty-one.
Yeah, you're talking about the first three man?
Yes.
Yeah, these are federal monies that we put in for in seventeen, nineteen, and twenty. And just with COVID delays, that money is finally becoming available. We share this money with the Sheriff's Department. Most of this is we use on our body cam program to buy new equipment as, you know, the technology fails like a cell phone.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Questions for the Chief or for Miss Bobbitt? Now, if there's a motion on the floor to suspend discussion, please call the roll.
Did we get a second on that motion?
We sure did. Mr. McDaniel seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Ms. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution number ninety-three twenty-one.
Second? Motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution ninety-three dash twenty-one. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
Nothing further.
Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution ninety-three dash twenty-one passes eight to zero. Thank you, Chief. Temporary Resolution ninety-four dash twenty-one.
A resolution to increase receipts inappropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend their certificate of other sources, appropriations with the county auditor and the Point Four Five Police and Fire Levy Fund two four seven, and authorize the issuance of a then-announced certificate for this funding, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, seconded by Mr. Matlin.
Ms. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to have the chief, because I know he's standing there at the podium, talk about this CARES Act grant.
Came through, through JAG, also through the federal government. And last spring, because of COVID, we had an option to capture thirty-eight thousand additional dollars. So, we submitted what we'd like to spend the money for, and the federal government approved it. And that money has now finally been released to us.
So, I'm going to ask for suspension. Thank you, Chief. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading on Temporary Resolution number ninety-four twenty-one.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-four dash twenty-one. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
Well, as the chief just said, this is money that's been approved to come to us here in Lancaster, Ohio, from the federal government.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
It's eight to zero. Ms. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution number ninety-four twenty-one.
Second? We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution ninety-four dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
Nothing further, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution ninety-four dash twenty-one. Temporary Resolution ninety-five dash twenty-one.
A resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the issuance of a then-announced certificate offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Just as a brief recap from what was said in the Finance Committee meeting, Superintendent Nixon indicated that the filter number one at the Memorial Drive Water Treatment Facility needs to be cleaned out and have the filtration media replaced to the tune of about a hundred nineteen thousand and seven hundred and ninety dollars. And we'd like to, at this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-five dash twenty-one.
Second? We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-five dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Mr. James?
Nothing at this time.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero, eight to zero. Mr. James?
Yes, at this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon our written record Temporary Resolution numbered ninety-five dash twenty-one.
Second? We have a motion and a second to pass, gross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution ninety-five dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. James?
Nothing further, thank you.
Discussion on motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution ninety-five dash twenty-one passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution ninety-six dash twenty-one.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an LPA federal local LET project agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of Sixth Avenue from Memorial Drive to Maple Avenue, known as the FAI CR five oh two zero six two PID eleven forty-four oh seven project, offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Stotin.
Mr. Stotin? Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion that council suspend its rules, waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary ninety-six twenty-one, please.
We're going to need a second on it since you were the original second. Who else is on your committee?
Who else on public works?
Who's the third person on public works? Mr. James, will you second it? Thank you very much. We now have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-six dash twenty-one. Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Schonk indicated that the quicker we get this to ODOT, potentially, the better. So, I don't think there's anyone here that would argue that E-Sixth Avenue from Memorial to Maple could use a good repaving. So, in that, or to that regard, I'm going to go ahead and ask for suspension this evening.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary ninety-six twenty-one, please.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution ninety-six dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution ninety-six dash twenty-one passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution ninety-seven dash twenty-one.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for the lateral D truck sewer phase project offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Council, uh, President. Uh, as was stated in the, um, Finance Committee Meeting, Denise Cruz indicated that the costs of this particular project have increased significantly. And, Mr. President, at this time, I would like to ask or make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of ninety-seven days twenty-one resolution.
Mr. Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
That's okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-seven dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Mr. James?
No, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon our written record Temporary Resolution numbered ninety-seven days twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution ninety-seven dash twenty-one. Mr. James?
Nothing further, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution ninety-seven dash twenty-one passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution ninety-eight dash twenty-one.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for the Wiley Road Water Loop Project, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Yes, this will be the first of two readings of this resolution.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution ninety-eight dash twenty-one. Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty-one.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding and declare an emergency for the purchase of pipe and other related materials for use in the Wiley Road Water Loop Project and to approve all then announced certificates that may come from this project, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
Once again, uh, on the information that we got from, um, Stephen Wellstad on this particular project, um, the reason for suspension is timeliness of it. Unfortunately, with the cost increases and everything that's happened, we don't have a lot of options to try and get things done quickly. So, Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-nine days twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Mr. James?
No, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. James?
Yes, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon our written record Temporary Resolution numbered ninety-nine days twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. James?
Nothing further, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty-one passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution one hundred dash twenty-one.
A resolution authorizing the mayor, on the behalf of the City of Lancaster, Ohio, to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to One Ohio memorandum of the understanding inconsistent with the terms of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one National Opioid Settlement Agreement and declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Stoughton and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary one hundred twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution one hundred dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is the, you know, as the preamble was read, this is the, uh, kind of the settlement, uh, for opioids, uh, for the opioid, opioid lawsuit for the One Ohio. This, uh, this has some timeliness to it. It needs to be passed by, uh, all municipalities by, um, August the thirteenth, which is Friday. So, that's my reason for suspension.
Thank you very much for the discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary one hundred twenty-one, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution one hundred dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Let's give you a few details here. Um, it, uh, current, or kind of the settlement is staggering in numbers. It looks like all opioid distributors, with the exception of Johnson and Johnson, will pay, uh, in twenty-one billion dollars over eighteen years. Johnson and Johnson will pay, uh, five billion in over nine years, uh, with approximately twenty-two point eight billion, uh, in settlement proceeds payable to the state and local subdivisions nationwide. That seems like a lot of money, but, uh, kind of to Mr. Hall's point earlier, uh, it's like Lancaster's, uh, share will be two hundred and twenty to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, not really, uh, huge impactful amounts based on the, uh, size of the, the crisis. Uh, but nevertheless, um, you know, something is better, better than nothing at, at this point in time. The mayor also added that, uh, there could be, you know, grant programs and other things with the other parts of the pool that we may be, uh, able to tap into, uh, as, uh, you know, as, as a part of the settlement. The settlement monies must go to, uh, you know, opioid abatement, uh, specifically. So, uh, we'll see where it takes us. I think, uh, those numbers are telltelling. If anyone wants to pretend this wasn't really, or isn't really a problem, uh, those numbers will tell you otherwise.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to pass?
Just, just one final comment. The State of Ohio has lost one point two million years of life lost over the last ten years, uh, due to opioid addiction. Um, we aren't getting compensated to the degree that we need to, but it is, uh, welcome relief for, uh, the real human suffering that's occurred over the last twenty years.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further discussion on the motion to pass? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution one hundred dash twenty-one passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution one hundred and one dash twenty-one.
A resolution to decrease and increase appropriations in the Water Revenue Fund six zero zero three and the Waste Water Revenue Fund six zero zero four, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
James?
Uh, once again, just to reiterate what Superintendent Nixon said in the Finance Committee Meeting, this is just rearranging a couple of the accounts. He had underestimated some of the uniform expenditures and has found some other accounts that have some excesses that he's actually taking those funds from them. So, his overall budget remains the same and is not asking for an increase. So, uh, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution one oh one dash twenty-one.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution one oh one dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Mr. James?
No, thanks.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. James?
Yes, Mr. President, at this, uh, point, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon our written record Temporary Resolution numbered one oh one dash twenty-one.
Armin? Mr. Hall? We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution one oh one dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Mr. James?
Uh, nothing further, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.